I want to order this town council hybrid remote meeting for the budget. And I guess everyone please rise with the pledge of allegiance all back on my side. My pledge of allegiance, unified of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Seated. This item for consideration of the town council's proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget. So at least if you just wanted to do a quick overview and then we can open it up to the floor for questions. Just to highlight, you know, kind of budget meetings and comfortable process.
All right. I didn't think you wanted me to go through the entire budget. I know Tammy wants me to. Okay, Tammy.
Every day, all the time, line by line.
Basically, starting on March 16th, council got together. We went through all the departments. Also included the Board of Education, went through the departments in detail. Also discussed all the revenues for the town, grand list, increase in the grand list and so forth. And tonight we are here to discuss the town councils. If there's any recommended changes or how you wish to proceed and also will be discussing. Once you could get your proposed budget in place, we will do a resolution. So that we can set the resolution for the referendum as well as adopt your budget. And you may or may not wish to decide how you want to move forward with the question for the ballot and all that. We, there's some information in your attachments that is just for example purpose. Certainly, it'll be whatever you decide to go for.
Are there any questions from councillors about the budget as proposed or any? Any, you know, consideration or commentary you'd like to make? Yes.
Are we, are we just jumping right in?
Just for general discussion. Yeah, no, we're not at the resolution portion yet.
Okay, so I had asked Lisa, sorry, Jason just sent me the list on the motor vehicle thing. I had asked Lisa for a couple of scenarios. And as I expressed in the meeting that we had, my concern is no matter where you look, you look anywhere, look online, look anywhere. The car values are going to drop and they're going to drop. Not like 10 years from now as supply increases, they're going to come down. And I'm really concerned that we're using temporary funds to extend permanent expenses. So I'm not comfortable with where we're at in the budget right now at all. Because I think it's inflation right now. Everybody's hurting with inflation, gas prices, food prices and everything else. And we can make an impact and give people a reduction in their taxes. That's going to be meaningful to them. When spending more out of their pocket, we should not be, we should not be profiting off of inflation and supply things to increase the budget. Knowing that it's going to come down. That's my, my general overall comment. I do have numbers, but I figure everybody else can go through first and we can go further.
I just forwarded you Jason's email also, so everyone can have it.
Yeah, he just sent it. So it's.
Yeah.
Are there other councillors with comments or questions? Or we go around councillor Luba?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I want to thank everyone, just take this opportunity to thank everyone for their understanding over the past few weeks. It's been a difficult time with some family issues that have come up. And so I appreciate everyone's patience and understanding. Just let the chair and let the council know that after I was not, after I was able to get onto that one meeting, I wasn't able to get onto the rest just for a multitude of reasons. I did have an opportunity to review, to listen and watch all the hearings that went on, as well as review all the documentation that Ms. Hancock was, was kind enough to forward to me. So I appreciate it and I just want to let everyone know that I do feel comfortable being able to discuss this fully after having watched all the, everything that was going on. And so I just appreciate that. That being said, I, I agree wholeheartedly with what Tammy said. I think this is something where although we do, that the budget is a, is a, a solid budget that's been put forward by, by Ms. Hancock, it's something that I have great concerns about going forward regarding the issues of, of inflation and of having a windfall of money coming in. But then down the road as our, as we plan and have these expenses occur, that we, a few years down the road, we end up with a shortfall. And through no one else, through no one's fault or through not for lack of planning, but just simply by the nature of economics. And, and things starting to return to normal, where I think it's something that I, I don't feel comfortable moving forward with the proposal. Let this point without further, further discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you councillor Luba. Is there any other councillors that would like to comment? By Shereen?
So I've said it a couple of times at the previous meetings and I'm in the same camp as Luba and Ms. Nuccio. I do see this as a one-time windfall for the town, even stated. So I'm not comfortable using that revenue to, you know, expand, expand the, either the headcount or whatever else it's being used for. I think we should use that revenue to, to give it back to the residents in the form of a reduced mill rate. That's where I am at.
Thank you, by Shereen. Are there any questions from council and other council members? Councillor Murray?
I disagree. I think that we are seeing the impact of inflation in our pocketbooks at, at home. We're seeing increased costs at home. And unsurprisingly, we are seeing increased costs in government as well. I think that this town has suffered through years of reactionary budgeting and that needs to stop. And we should, instead of focusing on a number, be focusing on the needs of our community. And the needs of our town staff who work extremely hard for all of our residents. Our experts are telling us that while this increase in motor vehicle revenue is certainly due to current economic conditions, that it, while it will go down, it is not going to plummet. We are not going to see a cliff at the end of this year. And we are seeing other increases in our grand list as homes are coming off, being repaired for crumbling foundations, as new development is happening in town. And the projections that seem obvious show a lot of optimism in our brand list. I think we need to lower people's taxes. I agree. I think we can, within this budget, lower taxes while also looking ahead and planning for our community. We have suffered years of erosion of services and it's starting to impact our residents on a regular basis. And that, to me, is not acceptable. And it's time now to prioritize what needs to happen going forward and to start working towards that progression. Based on talking to department heads, on talking to residents, on listening to the public input that we've been given along this process. We have needs in town that aren't being met and they can be better met if we add a person to, an additional staff member to the senior center. Add a rep coordinator to the recreation department, add a public works laborer, add a public safety officer. We're talking about four additions, two of which are part-time. And it's the, you know, our town really deserves us to be considering our service needs. And we are in a unique position where we can both, if, address the service needs by adding four positions and lower taxes. We might never have this opportunity again, but we have it right now. And I think that we should move forward with the town manager's proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Murray. Any other questions or comments from councillor Colin or two hands up?
As my seniors. I. Tammy, you know, you're on. Okay. I like the whole side, all sides. Those are the beautiful things. That everybody said it. It's a good thing to reduce the taxes and everything else. But at the same time, what she says, everything has been neglected. So like, to me, I think it doesn't matter which side I go by, Tammy and Kathy. So like, we are here to give it to the town, not to the people. Doesn't matter which way. Either mill rate to drop it or the services. That we shouldn't have any problem in the future. But since we have a little bit extra money in DMV, motor vehicle, use it where it should be. But to me, it doesn't matter which way we use it, either within hiring more people or using staff or any number. So I think it's, I think it's a win-win for, for the people. But if we give them a more service, I think they would, they would appreciate it a little more. But it's like at the same time, at the same time, I don't know that the town, town manager proposal is reducing the mill rate. We are not going to hire, but we are going a little bit. A quarter percent of the decrease in the mill rate, but I don't know how much it's going to be. But I think it's, if you have services, more services are more increments to provide more services. I think that that would be more efficient. Now than not saving a couple of more dollars in their pocket if they don't see the service. I think that, I think that would be a long one if we propose them.
Thank you councillor Colin. One quick question, Lisa. I know Jason, I think, couldn't join us this evening or obviously isn't here for these meetings. But they kind of indicated that, that while this is inflationary, we wouldn't see a radical decline in subsequent years and that a lot of our increase in the grand list was also property values and businesses. Is that right?
There, there was some property values in residential businesses that we had some increases in the grand list as far as the few residents coming on the books. Some personal property. But as far as the vehicles, yes, there was an inflationary inclusion. I haven't looked at the report that he just sent to you. Straight out of our system, it's very difficult to determine how much was just the inflationary base of the vehicles from that were already on the books versus new vehicles. This has, it has some of it, he said, from what I read. But anyway, what he explained to me is that, you know, you really can't tell exactly what's going to happen in the future. But the trend has been you'll have some come off, some come on. As far as he did not think it would take a big dip. Now, you know, I don't have a crystal ball to, to give me the answers there. But also there are some other items hopefully coming on to the grand list for next year. After, you know, for the next budget, that hopefully if any of those motor vehicle values start coming off and depending on what happens at the state level, if, if we end up having to go to a depreciation model rather than the inflationary numbers, that'll all play into the calculation of the grand list for next year. So hopefully the new things coming on to our list will also help offset any decreases in the future motor vehicles.
Okay. And you're saying there's stuff that might be coming on. Is that, is there any that you can kind of elaborate upon? I know some are like, obviously, applications are in place.
Yeah, there, there is an application in place and I know there's been some discussion. I don't know if I'm at liberty to say, but it's a fairly large apartment complex here in town that is going to be built luxury apartments. With that, there is probably a couple of other businesses that are coming in based on that coming into town. I know there's some applications in place and some ready to go. Pretty much around the same time. There's one that's moving along currently here in town. So we're just working out some easement issues and things like that. There's two other developers that are doing things with their property. I don't know where it's going to go. We had Mr. Taylor over here behind the subway puppeteers. Yeah. He recently went to planning and zoning to get into the new regulations to have it comply with the village area so that he'd be able to take advantage of that. Now, I know there, there may be some concerns with how it's going to work for him. So I think they're still working on whatever those concerns are. But I know he's trying to do something over there, but I don't know exactly what just yet. I've met with him a couple of times. And I know he wants to do something, so we'll see what happens. Mr. Williams, I know, is moving along with things in his area. Again, I'm not sure what's going to happen. So hopefully we'll potentially have something starting in those areas. That I can't tell you exactly, but I do know further down, there's some other things happening.
So sort of like the crystal ball of what could happen with the motor vehicle taxes and values.
Yeah.
It's kind of same with.
It's the same thing. I can't tell you what's going to happen in other areas. I do know that there's some other businesses coming down. There's another thing that I have also been working on since I started in this position where I've been working with the Economic Development Commission, the Planning and Zoning Department to try to. My goal is to attract businesses into the town, you know, according to the plan of development. And the first step in that is trying to get an inventory. Where, where are there any empty spots that could be developed for commercial properties, things like that? And then, once we get, once we have that inventory and it'll have to change as things come on and come off, we've built it into an electronic system so that a developer, a real estate professional can look into that inventory and it'll bring up, is there water? Is there sewer? What is it zoned for? What kind of businesses? Things like that. Anyway, I'll try to make this quick. So, so what happens, we're doing baby steps here. Once we get that into place, get it advertised out there, we're also working with, I think it's Metro Hartford. There's, there's a, I can't remember the name of the firm in Hartford, but they do a lot of working with municipalities to help build that commercial interest. Probably working through them as well as our for-town initiative, as well as maybe reaching out to some developers ourselves, maybe get a tour going if we can get enough interest. Maybe bring some of these developers around to these areas, show them what talent has to offer, tell them some of the things that, you know, can be built in certain areas to try to encourage to bring them to town. So I'm trying to market the town, but it's a very slow process to get there. But we want to make sure it's done correctly and in accordance with this, with what the citizens want as well. So we look at the plan of development and of course.
Okay. And I guess just one final question. So we're kind of trying to discuss and part of the conversation's been about concerns of dropping it right down. At our last meeting, we had Jason at our meeting to talk about crumbling foundations and we've gradually seen a, a pace of more homes being fixed than those reporting foundation issues. Do we expect that trend to kind of continue where we're going to have more and more homes actively being fixed, brought back on to the grand list?
I, we're seeing a lot of homes being fixed. And I think there's some legislation at the state Capitol that we're working with our legislators on to. I think Jason testified recently because there was the law that was put into place that allows them to get the exemption until they get their foundation fixed and it was supposed to sunset and now it's into perpetual perpetuity. Thank you. So, you know, that's one of the things we're trying to work on because if, if, you know, it's understandable if people need to, their, their plans are to fix it and move forward. Those are, you know, then those are the people that should still have the exemptions for those properties. The ones who may get an insurance check or something and then decide to do nothing with it and keep the reduced property. That's where we come into concern with that type of law being in place. So, but there has been a number coming on increasingly over the years. I think you shared in the report and it showed the amount, I didn't bring it with me this evening, but the amount's coming on each year. So we're seeing a lot of positive impact and not as many filing at this point, but we will see how the future holds with that. Okay.
And then just one final question that I'm all set at this point is, are you use of the fund balance, has it been on trend with what was kind of discussed when Michael Rosen was the manager, the pandemic hit, we kind of used a pretty high amount and stepping back. And that 200,000 is kind of what we use on average and is the, is, is, is a responsible level of use based on the percentage that's in the fund balance right now?
Yes. Historically, we were between 150, 200,000 when I first started here over 10 years ago. And, you know, with the trends in our revenues exceeding expenditures and being in good situations, I feel comfortable with using the $200,000 that I recommended. I wouldn't be going as high as, well, I wouldn't be going high, as high as we have in the past, four, five, 600,000. Absolutely not. I would not recommend that. Especially if we run into a situation where we have to start balancing things in the future, then there may be opportunity to use fund balance at those points in time. Now this year, depending how we end up with everything, there may be some funds going into the municipal stabilization fund. We have to wait and see how the entire year ends, but there, there were some excess revenues that came in. Now we have to go through the policy, the ordinance that governs that. And so there may be some funds going into there as well for future years to at least help if there's any fluctuations that we have to immediately deal with. So I would not recommend going much higher with the use of fund balance. Okay.
Thank you. So I would say at this point, I am comfortable with putting forward to the voters to decide if the town manager's proposed budget then be adopted by the council and go to referendum. That's just my opinion at this point. And certainly I go around the horn, actually, you know, councillor, when you check if you want to speak once before we go for a second round of discussion. You know, I'd like to give everybody a chance to speak before we go a second time.
Your gentleman's answer, that's the questions that I had that were previously raised earlier tonight. Mine's more of a statement, so just I try to keep it under a certain timeline. But first I want to thank Ms. Hancock and our staff for working extremely hard and superintendent and all the board of education members that put their time and due diligence into working on this budget and bringing it to the town council. I want to make sure you all get that recognition. I know, and I'm sure other councillors here spent many, many hours reading these budget books and board of education books, listened to our constituents and reading emails and just doing what we can to listen to everybody. I support Ms. Hancock's budget. It's been a long time that we, the servants, but the needs of the public for everybody. This budget helps every department, the fire station, the senior center, the parks and rec, the board of education. We've also been able to decrease some capital debt, debt of $770,000. I anticipate we'll be able to remove some more next year, but we still, of course, have to talk about that as a committee. My final statement is this budget is recovering from staff shortages, busted out public works and recreation town trucks, some that cannot even be used. Cracked tennis courts, outdated fire trucks. This budget supports residents in more than one way. This budget supports senior citizens, youth, adults, all ages. Where we founded and reinvested with this budget, we're ensuring more public safety, safer roads, schools, and maintaining recreation facility parks, cemeteries and fields throughout the entire town. On top of these positive changes mentioned above for our community, we are able to reduce the mill rate and lower taxes for the first time in a long time. So thank you again to everybody here and that has been a part of this process.
Thank you. So now with that, we can go around for a second line of either questions or commentary. And then if there's no other further questions, I would consider moving to the budget resolution approval. So there's further discussion. Councillor Nuccio?
I, I see things a little differently, which I think is clear. But I don't think we should be using any of the fund balance at all right now. We have an excess of revenues coming in and the fund is meant to be used as a, as a balancing tool or a bug or if we don't think we're going to have enough revenues for expenses, but we're increasing our expenses dramatically. So I don't see the sense in tapping the fund for that when we have a, a windfall incoming of revenue. And I get a little concerned when we talk about the possibility of future, future revenues that we don't have in front of us for sure. And more importantly, we've always talked about trying to develop the town to lower the tax impact. How many times do we hear our revenue is, you know, our taxes are so high because we don't have businesses, our taxes are so high because we don't have these. Now we're possibly going to get some new businesses and we are ratcheting up the expenses. So that doesn't really set a good precedence for me if we're going to count on future possible development to come in and increase expenses. So, you know, I'm thinking, I always kind of gauge what we get in email or anything else and balance it with what I talk to people, what people come and talk to me about and that. And I have to say, the only thing that ever really disappoints me is the fact that not a lot of people write in with their opinion. Because the opinion that I get is not what's, what I'm seeing across the board here. So I'm concerned when I, I guess that I asked Lisa for a bunch of, to look at the numbers and she sent me some scenarios and that. And for reducing the town by $100,000 and the board of ed to 2%, we can lower the taxes to 1.67% reduction. Almost 2% reduction in taxes when people are really needing it. That's, that's where, and that was without any usage of the fund at all, without using any money from the fund. So I, I think the budget that we have in front of us is, it's too high for my liking. And just looking very quickly, because I haven't had a chance to really go through it, just the thing that Jason sent us, about $11 million that he estimated is, is increase in value from 2020, 21 for, for vehicles. So about 1,000, I don't get where 1,000 is. I'm going to have to look at this because I'm looking at his numbers. Yeah, he just, he just sent it. So it's not anything that I think we can really kind of take into, to use as a tool and that. But, you know, I, I've said what, what I think, and I think it's, it's too high right now. I think we can still add the, some of the positions that we have in there and that. I think we can still give a substantial increase to the board of ed and still give relief to the residents of almost 1.7% reduction in taxes. But that's my, that's my dog and pony show, I guess.
No, it's, I wouldn't say it's a show. It's your thoughts. It's genuine and I appreciate it. That's why there is a two-party system. If we all agreed on the same things, these meetings would be a lot faster and more boring.
So we don't get home in time for dinner. So, you know, there would be that.
Councillor Murray?
Yeah, maybe through you. Councillor, my colleague mentioned. Counsel, uh, my colleague mentioned a hundred thousand dollar reduction in the town and. Two percent increase in the board of ed. I'm wondering if there's any. Ideas on how to get there. I mean, those are nice numbers. They're very round, pretty numbers, but they don't actually have much content in how we get to a lower. Just wondering through you if there's any information available about that.
Yeah, Councilman, if you're okay to respond.
I think everybody has to do their own budget analysis. Like when I went through and I looked at the trend stuff, I found eighty-nine thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. Of trend that was higher spend in this budget than trend on the town side. And that included the four increases in positions. Personally, I would think right now. There could be some playing around with getting the senior center person in a little bit quicker or not. And a little bit more review around the rec position and whether or not we're gonna have increased revenue in that. But I would say between, the only position that I'm not a hundred percent sold on personally myself is the, the DPW position, adding that one back. And then adjusting to trend would easily get you the hundred thousand dollars on the town side. Considering, like I said, just analysis of trend was like eighty something thousand dollars from higher expected expenses this year compared to three-year trend of spend. And on the board of ed side, I, I don't get as intimately deep into that one. Uh, I think the two point nine nine going down to two percent, two percent is what they had last year and. I think it's a good cover for what they need this year. That's just, and then taking out the, the general fund. Because I really don't think we should be tapping the general fund with an excess of revenue, but.
So I, thank you. I, I heard the word trend a lot. I'm wondering through you, Mr. Chair, what, what that really means.
From a accounting perspective, you look at what people spend. And in the town side of the budget, we're fortunate, we get a lot more detail on the town side of the budget. You have three years of actuals in the budget package right here. And you look at what people spend every three years. You average out the trend of those three years and then you look at what is projected in the current year and what. Is projected in the spend for the next year. And when something is trending, say it's a five hundred dollar spend, I'm just gonna use a rough general number. If they spend five hundred dollars every year for three years, then the budget goes up to two thousand dollars. Without a strong, this is exactly what that is. To me, that's a higher, the trend doesn't support the spending. You don't have to look at, and the thing about our book, that's different than the board event book too, is we see actuals. You see actuals and then you just see the current year budget and then um. The expense for the next budget. So you can budget anything you want, but if you look at what people actually spend in those classifications. If there's a variance that in the accounting world is balancing to a trend, it's. Does the spend support, does the trend support the spend? So I, and I go over, as I'm sure you guys did too. Every individual page in here and write notes as I go or look at it or do an extra worksheet to look at the trend and then what's being asked for. So that's, again, everybody does budget their own way. I'm not here to do the budget planning for everybody. I'm not here to like, you know, give. You guys will do your own work on that. That's just my, the work that I do on it.
Any further questions?
Yeah. So the trend, you said you found eighty-seven thousand dollars. That out of the total town budget is uh zero point six six percent of the total budget. But you talked about a reduction of a hundred thousand dollars. And there's a, there's a gap there. And so your suggestion is to start. That you, you mentioned starting the senior center person at a different time point?
We don't get to make those decisions. You know, when we look at the budget, that's the town manager's decision. We don't get to make those decisions. That's just something that I know that they've been looking at for a long time. My trend, when looking at this, I found eighty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars. That trend did not support the spend. And like I said, I'm not a hundred percent sold on the DPW resource. So between those two, you far exceed. Eight, a hundred thousand dollars. How to get to that number would be a hundred percent up to the town manager. That's her purview and not ours. Which is why we just debate the budget and what we think we should see. Like same thing with the board of ed, we can't tell them what they can and cannot spend it on. We just look at it, come up with our, what we're comfortable with. That's what I'm comfortable with. Okay.
So I will say um that from my perspective. The public works position, what I heard from the public works department, what I see in my streets. When I'm walking or driving. There's some stress in that department. It was pretty clear from talking to the public works staff. That while they are just barely covering the needs. With the current staff, they are clearly very stressed out. And I think that our town has been very lucky to have some very hardworking and dedicated employees. We know though that if those employees are kept under a position of stress, that sometimes they leave. And we've seen that happen in the past several years where we've lost some really wonderful town staff employees. Not to retirement, but to alternative town, different towns. That we're asking a lot of our staff. I think if we don't fund and support this public works position, we could potentially see more overtime charges. Certainly, they talked about how not having this person slows down street cleaning in the wintertime. It assigns more work to current employees. And this elevated workload simply is not sustainable. If someone's out sick or hurt or on vacation, other staff members have to work even more to cover. Um, I think that if we can't. Keep a public works department properly staffed. That we get what we pay for, which right now has resulted in some degrading roads. We saw the map of the road conditions throughout town. Um, and I, they're working so hard in making sure that our roads meet a minimum standard, but. You can tell talking to them that that's a stress for them and, and that's what they told us. So I think that position is important to fund. As my colleague said, the, the senior center has been asking for a position. I think. There's one person assigned to the senior center to, to staff that and. Our seniors make up a good percentage of our population, I think, providing a part-time position. This budget has that position starting July first, I believe, is a reasonable thing for us to fund. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilman Mubah?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that, you know, all of us know that working out a budget is something that's very difficult for everybody. There's a lot of competing decisions, a lot of competing issues that we have to take into consideration. That we're trying to do the right thing and trying to make sure that we carry on the services that the town needs. That our residents expect, but also not putting us in a position, a precarious position where by making this certain decisions that. Although it may be a, an immediate answer that down the road, that it may create a, a situation where we're now facing again a. An issue where the town is in either deficit or that there's budgetary issues. I'm still not sold on the whole issue of this, of the funding continuing on. That being said, I think that, that these positions that we've been discussing are needed and that this continuation of our services are needed. But I think that what we're looking at is that we're looking at, okay. Do we need this position or not? That's really not our decision. Just like when we've been told that we, when we discussed the board of education budget. We just tell them the number and then they have to figure out what they're going to do with it. That's what Dr. Willard is for, that's what the Board of Education Finance, Financing Board is, is all about. They do what we provide them with. If we provide them a certain amount of money, they have to work within that budget. How they do that, that's not up to us, that's up to them. Same thing with the town. We set the budget and what the priorities are, are then set by the town manager. So if we say that, this is what our recommendation is, that, you know, that we want, that we want to see this budget at this, this amount. That how the town manager at this point, Ms. Hancock, how she does that is up to her. If she wants to use it for positions, that's great. Then that means that they have to find some other ways to fit those budgets, fit that into the budget. So I think it's something that I'm very, very against dipping into that fund. I think that's something where I agree a hundred percent with Ms. Nuccio that we, if we have a budget surplus, we should not be going into that, into that fund at all. There should be no reason why we do that. And I think it's something that, well, we are giving a reduced mill rate at this point. That the, I think that the total amount that we were, that we were saying was something like forty-three dollars a month. Um, was that about, I mean.
The average, I think, was around forty-three.
Forty-three a year?
For the six-year average. I mean, I have it here in the.
So that's, you know, that's a tank of gas. I mean, that's something where, you know, really, I, I would like to see what we can do more for our residents. Said, the one thing that we're coming out of is that everyone's saying that the town is growing. Yes, the town is growing. That's outstanding. I love to see it growing. I love to see us continuing this trend. But we also have to recognize, you know, we're not that far out of, out of the COVID pandemic. And that we really don't know what's going on and that businesses are still struggling, families are still struggling to come back from what we lost during that period of time. The businesses aren't back a hundred percent yet. Nobody's back a hundred percent yet. And so I think that's a struggle that we have to, that we have to face and that. That coupled with the uncertainty of whether or not this trend is going to continue with the, with the budget and with the money that we have coming in as a surplus. I think that while looking forward and setting the groundwork and starting off with hiring people. Right now would be a good idea. I think that going full force and going with all these hires immediately. Is something that would be of advice because then what we're doing is unlike one-time spending expenditures, like buying the equipment. Like buying other things that we need that, that the town may need. That's a one-time expense and then it's maintenance from that point forward. That when we hire people, that's a continuing operational expense. That means that from that point forward, this is what's going on and it only goes up from there. The expenses for the benefits and everything else only goes up, the wages only go up. And that, so we need to make sure that, looking ahead, that we have a solid plan going forward. So I think that the budget that we have right now, I would still like to see some, some additional uh. Cuts made in it. I hate saying cuts. I'd like to see some reductions that can be examined in that. Because I think that there is, you know, in looking through it, where I'm not, I'm not as, as number oriented as Ms. Nuccio here is. Where, but having dealt with multi-million dollar budgets in other, in other ways. There's always some built-in, not, well, built-in excess that can be adjusted. And even though it may be five thousand here, five thousand there. That, that's something when you have twenty, twenty of those five thousand dollar budgets added up, that's a hundred thousand dollars we could make. So that's something where, I guess, summarizing, summarizing a long-winded comment, Mr. Chair. I, I think that is something that, again, I, I would not support any budget that would include going into the fund. I would like to see some type of reduction. I think that uh, Ms. Nuccio has put forward a solid uh. Recommendation. Whether or not we can adjust that to some degree, I'd be willing to consider because I'm always open-minded, but I think it's something that right now as proposed. While it is a solid budget that's been put forward by Ms. Hancock and I understand and I appreciate all the work that the, that the town department heads have done. The board of education has put together, then I think it's something that we have an opportunity to still find some additional savings in there. While still meeting the desires that we have to maintain our services and to provide these positions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Mubah. Are there any other, any other councilors that would like to speak for a second time?
And so first. You're not long-winded. You don't bother me with all your questions and responses. So that's fine. Anyways, um, I am uncomfortable. I get what everybody's saying is people think there's a revenue bubble and. I think taxes should, everybody wants taxes lower. Me included, I live in a small home, you know, I don't have a lot of money, right? So I get it. But I, gee, I'm a firm believer in making sure our needs of our town are being met, right? I mean. It's a tough one, it's not an easy decision. I can't say I'm comfortable with a couple hundred thousand dollars from the board of education. Did anybody listen to the presentation or their, their, you know? I was. I mean, I listened and saw the faces of our, our town departments when asked. They look trained. I mean, like somebody said here, if someone is out sick, we might have to close that department. I mean, is that the kind of town people want to live in? I mean, that's a real question. Are you okay if a firefighter can't make it to your door? You okay if the senior center has to close down because Kim can't be there because she's out sick? Well, the public works can't clean or load the stomach tares because we're short-staffed. I, as long as I've known you, Lisa, you've done a great job with financial and I don't think that you would put something forth that you don't think can uh. Stay, I don't know what the word is, stay going for the future. I don't think you would want to, your budget to fail in future years. It's because that would come down. You know, to how the management is done. So I firmly believe that this is a budget that will help every resident in this community.
Is there any other commentary from council members? Vice Chair Regan?
I'm sure. So yeah, just to add on to some of the comments that have been made. I think with this windfall that we've had, if we have these types of increases, I think we're setting ourselves up for a more difficult budget process next year. Because our mill rate's gonna be, gonna be uh, we, we could have a lower mill rate, which would make our jobs next year early, easier. So. You know, I'm for everything that you're wanting to add up. You know, I'm not, I'm not against, you know, the new hires that are in the budget. I just, I would like to see the budget lowered. I, I'm not comfortable with the, with the percentage increase we're seeing. It's, this is my, I think my fifth budget and I think these are the biggest increases we've seen, right? By a lot. So I would just like to find a way to, to lower that. I'm not. You know, I'm not so much against going into the fund because we've done that every year since I've been here. But I think there are ways that we can look at it and see if, to, just to give some more relief to the, to the folks out there. My instinct is to always keep taxes lower, let people decide to do with their money what they will, rather than adding services. I say let the people decide what to do with their money by lowering the rate as low as we possibly can.
Thank you, Vice Chair Regan. Are there any other comments from council members? Councilor Gao?
I would say that. I'm going to keep, continue your, John, your conversation that. Also, seven of us, we can keep going on. Out of fifteen thousand, we are seven of us. So we are trying to represent them, but. Why don't we? Let it go and, you know, the people decide what they want. Either they want service or they want to. Uh, Lisa, one question. If you do cut a mill rate by one percent or one and a half, by two percent, what's the saving for the, a resident?
I don't have that information.
Just, just about. Hundred dollar, two hundred dollar, four year.
I, I mean, I would have to, I would really have to.
I, I know you cannot give me because how taxes are five thousand, here's a nine thousand, so I know, but it's like, I'm just.
Are you saying tack, cut the mill rate or?
I'm just saying that if, if we cut the mill rate to, let's say thirty-five plus, thirty-five, I'm just, just.
That's hundreds of thousands of dollars that would happen.
I'm talking about just one person. I'm talking about, let's say, John, John taxes around nine thousand dollars. So what is, is gonna affect him? How much saving he's gonna do? Let's say three hundred thou, three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars, thousand dollars.
Where's the average?
Do you have the spreadsheets that I sent you? Was there any that got the mill rate down to about thirty-five and all those scenario? Do you have all those scenarios that I? Because if there was one that was around thirty-five mills, that would show you, there was a slide, I always had the tax impact. I was the third tab on those spreadsheet. But without that, I can't tell you off the top of my head. I couldn't even give you a guess.
I'm not saying that I'm gonna quote you or somebody's gonna quote you, but.
Right now with the point, where are we, a point six five reduction in the mill rate, I think the average household had. Around a thirty-four, thirty-five. around a thirty-four, thirty-five dollar decrease, something like that. So that's that's point six five of a mill. So yeah, point six five percent. So if you have another point six five, it would be maybe eighty dollars or sixty dollars, seventy dollars, somewhere around there. Per year.
Per year?
Yeah. So it'd be a total of like seventy dollars savings.
I think if I give you if I if I'm saving seventy dollars, it means it's one tank of it's one tank of gas. One tank of gas, I won one chip to the Big Y. I who's going to remember that? That I say I went to a big lie and I saved seven hundred dollars from town, town and Lisa. And I did the grocery and I I think it's if I have more services, as I said previously, that in my lifetime, what I've seen in town Holland is God mistook and it's no problem. If I have more services, I think I would say, you know what? Thank you, Congress. Thank you all. All the members, but like if I say seventy dollars, let's guess. I'm just, I'm just saying that, but that's like my word is my word is like if we go toward the toward the if we can make a decision, that's fine. If not, I would say, you know what? Let them make a decision if they want to save seventy dollars or they want to put another truck for the public service that they want to see more, one more guy that as Lisa says, and previously I was having a meeting with Lisa and Lisa says one of us called her and she said complained about sidewalk. And I told her, I said, Lisa, you should have come. And she said, no, I'm not coming down to clear the sidewalk, but there are two people called out. And then at the same time, I says, how many people are we going to use it for whole town? But it's taking taking them about four hours with one trip. So like I would say if you need, if you have more people, I'm against it. I'm against the tax. Don't take me wrong. But it's like, you know what? If I have one more guy or two more guys, give me more service, I'd be happy. If we cannot let the people have decide what they want, seventy dollars or one more person. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Khan.
Thank you, Sammy. But I understand, right? The public works labor does more than just plow, right? Yeah, right. So we talk about plowing a lot, but they're actually going to maintain a lot of other grounds in Talon that probably a little bit.
They do all the fields. They they do all the cemetery work, of course. They have streets that they work on. Some of the, well, the facilities people do a lot of the building work and some of the grounds. So, you know, there's a lot more than just plowing streets.
Right. That's what I just want to make sure that people keep referring to just the plows, that they do a lot more for the town.
Are there any comments or questions or anything else from council members before we move on to item five? All right, item five is a draft resolution. I would personally entertain a motion to adopt the town manager's proposed amount as the town council's proposed amount.
So.
I don't know, Lisa, do we have to read out the numbers for each line or is that is that acceptable?
If you're using the town manager's numbers, it's there.
Okay.
So I mean, I would, but it depends on where it ends up and then.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, if I counsel you to check. Is there any further discussion? Any other commentary that people would like to make before we go?
Reactionary budgeting has negatively impacted Talon for a number of years. Prior focus has been on minimizing increases to the mill rate and has led to the degradation of our capital infrastructure due to deferred maintenance. Staff have routinely been asked to do more with less, resulting in the loss of multiple department heads and experienced support staff. Community services have been unable to meet residents' needs, driving some of our neighbors to seek programs and services outside of town. School programs have been cut. These practices are easy to justify. Everybody wants their taxes cut. But the gradual erosion caused by these practices can be seen throughout town. It's time to make some hard decisions. We need to reframe our conversations away from focusing on the mill rate. Rather, we need to look at community needs, provide essential services, and commit to properly maintain and upkeep our capital infrastructure. We must show the pride we have in our community by ensuring that the things we are most proud of are maintained. This has the added benefit of preserving and increasing our property values, which helps with the financial security of each household. Budgeting in this manner will also save the town money in the long run. While we cannot address everything in a single year, we can set priorities and begin the process of properly funding the most important items. After reviewing budget requests and speaking with department heads, I believe this includes funding Board of Education priorities by recovering previous year's pre-investments, maintaining vital education services, and rebounding from the profound impact of the COVID- nineteen pandemic. Adding a staff member to the senior center, reinstating a rec coordinator to help manage increased demand in current and new programs, reinstating a public works laborer, adding a public safety officer, and investing in capital equipment and infrastructure, which now must be repaired or replaced for safety and mandatory reasons. Balancing spending and taxation is a delicate process. Our brand list has increased three point eight percent, which is the biggest increase in the past ten years. Much of this is due to motor vehicle values. Our experts tell us that while this brand list increase is a reflection of current economic conditions that might change, we are not expecting a sharp decline in future years. With this increase, we can lower taxes and still fund priority items. This budget, as Sammy said, is a win-win for talent. We are simultaneously decreasing the mill rate and planning for talent's future. We are supporting every major town department. We are rebuilding, rebounding, and reinvesting.
Thank you, Councilor Luba.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While I may not be as as practiced or rehearsed with the as as a as eloquent as as Ms. Murray was, I think that this is something where that yes, a budget is something that is a very difficult process that we as town council members need to balance the needs of our town with the responsibilities that we have to be good stewards of our town members' money, of our town residents' money. That we need to take a look at all the different issues. A lot of what was presented, and I agree with with much of what was said, that we need to invest in town, but we need to invest in town wisely. And that with a the increase that we've had, a one-time increase as stated, that I think it's something that for us to go full forward without knowing fully how the projection will carry us forward over the next several years is something that is dangerous. And I think it's something that while we need to invest in the town, we need to do it wisely. I think that investing in the in the staffing that we need and the equipment that we need is vital. I think that we need to continue on with our educational aspects. But I think that we need to take a look at it and that there's other ways that we can do it wisely and efficiently and effectively while still saving money from this budget. I think it's something that if we look at it, what what Ms. Nuccio is requesting is not something that's astronomical. We are not asking for a ten percent or five percent decrease in the town budget. That the hundred thousand dollars that was proposed is something that I think is reasonable. And I think it's something that, as I said before, can be found if 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 given the opportunity. And that still would allow for the staffing proposals that that Ms. Hancock has put forward. I think with the two percent decrease as performed for the Board of Education is something that's reasonable. That the Board of Education budget was the increase was one of the largest that I've seen since since I've been on the town council as well. And I think one of the largest that's been put forward over the past number of years. So while it may be, we may be seeing the arguing about semantics. When you look at the actual numbers, that the actual numbers are still significant increases. And that like with the Board of Education, once that increase goes in, we can never go beyond that, below that number that we set. That every year, that whatever that number is, we can never go below that the following year. So it's not something like the town budget where we can adjust it accordingly. Where with the town budget, we could have it at a certain amount one year, but then reduce that. Once that Board of Education budget is increased, that's it. There's no reduction below that. And that's something that is significant. I think with the two percent re- decrease is something that's reasonable and rational to ask for. Because we need that, that our families need that. And although this may not be may be a significant amount for each individual family, that's something. And some people, that's all that they have. And that I think it's something that with the again, with the use of the fund that we're that we're being put that's being put forward is something that we can't do that. That we cannot rely upon that, especially when we have a when we have this this type of windfall, as we've been calling it to this point. So I while I while I agree with the need for the services, need to invest, the other thing is that we're talking about with the businesses in town. We all want to draw businesses in. But even with the decrease in mill rate, that's still something that can be enough to dissuade people when they see the trend and they see the spending. Good businesses don't just look at the mill rate. They look at the trends and they look to see what the business is, what the trend of the town is. And if they see a continually increasing budget with no reductions, that's something that good businesses, especially large businesses, get wary of. Having been involved in those investments and decisions like that, that's something that is significant for even for small businesses. So I think it's something again that while I agree that we need to invest, I think we need to invest wisely. And I think that this is something, while this is a solid budget and there's no slight against anyone that has worked on it, I still think that there's enough that we can work on to try and bring it lower. So at this point, I will not be able to support the proposition, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Luba. Are there other councilors that would like to speak? Councilor Khan?
I am going to give you my example. I cannot compare myself to the town, not anybody else, any other business in town, town. I've been here about twenty years and it's a small business. I started from from the box and work hard and whatever I made, I invested it. Keep putting it, keep putting it, keep putting it. And sometimes I miss my lunch by something else. And whenever I make money, I I buy whatever I needed, whatever I do more that I whatever I can provide services to more add up more into it to business. And that's why it took me about twenty years just by I'm right now. I didn't finance anything on my store. I did not get it on. I did not went to the bank because for me as a gas station, it's the biggest challenge is like environmental issue and nobody, no banks will finance me to give me. That's very hard to do it. In order to process that application, you need phase two, phase three, phase four. And you're talking about thousands of dollars. I think spending a thousand dollars to invest into that environmental study and I'd rather have that money invested into some economics, whatever it is. And that's what the service I'm trying to provide. And the same basically, I'm using the same tactic right now. I'm not saying that we needed ten more trucks. I'm going to ten more guys or whatever it is. It says compare seventy dollars, what John is going to say per year. Have some other things. And it's not something that I'm against, the new deduction of mill rate. I'm in the favor of but try to compare it, which is more valuable. And that's why I asked Lisa, I said, how much John is going to save? Seventy bucks? Seventy bucks nowadays is not even one tank. I'm sorry. If I put on my car, my wife drives a hundred dollars. This is more, my car is a small car, but it's a hundred dollars right now. So what are you trying to save? But with that money, whatever surplus is from a motor vehicle, if we can buy something out of it, I think that's going to last me for longer than the one-time shop shopping from Big Y, one-time gas. And I'm not, it's like, I'm not trying to hear, I give it that point, but it's like think about long, long term. And that's all. If you guys don't agree with that, let them go to town, town, let them decide it. This is of seven of us. There are fifteen fifteen thousand of those. So let them decide it. Whatever they want. I'm not saying, I'm not pushing you to say yes.
Thank you, Councilor Khan. Are there any other comments? I want to make sure that everyone has a chance to speak for you, for you a second on the commentary.
I just wanted to mention too, I mean, we are working on ordinance sixty as well. I know that really sounds like we talked about like October again, remember, right? So I mean, that's something that.
It might be sooner. We're. We're trying, we're trying to get with Mr. Revino.
Okay, I just think that we should really, really not let that get away from us.
Can I get one more?
I'm sorry, just want to make sure if there's anything else I want to go on, but yeah.
Thank you. This guy makes a great, great example, you know, with seventy dollars. But in the three years that I've been on this, the first year, it was fifty dollars. Then it was forty dollars. Then it's seventy dollars. And so the trend, you know, over when we look at each year individually, it's a small amount. But it's a cut of, it's your death of a thousand cuts. When you're living here over a period of twenty years, that's could be two thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars. So I mean, but you make a great point. And I mean, I I agree with you a hundred percent. But I think it's something that when we look at it in the long run, especially for people that have been here over a number of years, it does make a difference over a period of time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It adds up. Don't take no, it does add up. And that's why a lot of people are choosing South Carolina. All right, they are choosing because of lower taxes and lower, whatever it is, but it's like at the same token, it's like I had a lot of email that support Board of Education, support Dr. Ball is like, give them more while we are taking away fifty thousand dollars on him. So I say, you know what? There's only one question I I have. I the invest into education. I invest into one more thing that I've been talking about is older generation, which is more important, a young kid that five years a kid, ten years high school kid, are the senior, which is more what valuable to to you. I would say, you know what? Save my senior, I did that, that that people that have been living here, they've been paying taxes for last thirty to forty years. And they don't want to move to South Carolina because they love what the town offered them or what the town has been, they've been living in, they want to live here. So I would say that, you know what? Offer them something rather than giving to give them another fifty thousand dollars or whatever it is. But I would say my word is towards the seniors rather than anywhere else. And I'm in the favor of, I'll just say that everybody says. To what that, to spend some money on those people that they've been supporting us for a long period. And now they need us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Khan. Are there any other comments, Vice Regan?
So something just occurred to me over the past few budget cycles that I've been a part of. I understand your point. It's not a lot of money and I understand your point. I understand your point. It adds up. What I heard every year when there's been any pushback on the budget as far as the increases, people would say to me, it's just a latte. It's a latte. Do it. It's a latte. Well, we have the opportunity to give the latte back today. And that's, that's what I'm advocating. I'm advocating give the latte back.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Vice Regan.
It's a lot.
Are there any other comments or councilors? I I kind of tried to write up some ideas and just some thoughts over. I, I kinda tried to write up some ideas and just some thoughts over the process. And I think a lot of it's already been said, but you know, I think the biggest thing to me is that there's been a lot of disagreement back and forth, policy levels, you know, I think two things are clear. One, we want to help our neighbors. You know, we want to give them and minimize burning out our staff and give them the best services possible. And we want to reduce the mill rate in some way as well to provide financial relief to neighbors. And of course, you know, we all have disagreements on why, how we want to get there. And I think that's part of, as I said at the beginning, you know, we have two parties because there's always disagreements. And when we come to these disagreements, I think the best result is, you know, we did eighteen years ago, we established the referendum process. It's relatively new in the three hundred plus years history of Tolland, but I think it's worked pretty well so far to give the people the final say. I think they decided way back when that they didn't want to have to wait two years to go down a council they didn't like. They wanted to respond within a few months of a budget being adopted. So my thought is we should go forward with Lisa's budget, you know, those who wish to advocate for or against it can do so in their own time. If it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, then we come back and we have a lot more of these discussions and reprioritize what we need out of our town and bring it back to them for a second vote. So that's just kind of my high level summary, but I do think this budget that Lisa put forward does do a lot in terms of recovery and rebounding and reinvestment that I've been said by other councilors. So that's just my final thoughts. If there's another conversation, then I would move to do a vote and I believe it'd be better just because it might be divided that we should do a roll call vote, so I'm gonna go around the horn. Uh Councilman Utichak? Councilor Luba?
No.
Councilor Anucia?
No.
Councilor, Rice, your vegan?
No.
Councilman Murray?
Yes.
Councilor Khan? And I mean, yes, so that is four in favor, three against, so that does pass. Now move on to item six, which is, I'm not gonna read up the whole thing, approval of resolution of pressing form of doubt for May third and so on and so forth. So there's, it's definitely all written out there. And there is a resolution included that discusses the budget referendum question, the date, time, location, as well as the presentation. So and I think I did communicate, the vice chair, he didn't, he'll just communicate it there on that. There were some questions and comments about whether or not we want to possibly reword the question or if there's any consideration to make it simpler or easier to understand. So I just wanted to open that floor for any questions or comments that councilors had or councilors.
So um the ballot question itself. Lisa, can we change that?
Yes, um you do have to include the amount of the budget and the uh the change in the budget. You don't have to include the mill rate information. Because normally, um what happens, the, the mill rate is set after the budget passes. So the, if anything, if you were going to include the language of the mill rate, you would, you would include it as being an estimated mill rate. Because that's what it is. It's an estimated mill rate at this time. If um if the budget moves forward.
So I did a little bit of research into other towns in Connecticut and their budget referendum question. And many of those towns don't include the change. They just include the amount of appropriations. Do we have to include the change?
I, if I recall, I have to pull up the charter. I think it does say in none of the budget, otherwise you just, I think it said the change in it, but I have to pull. Do you have the town side real quick then? Because, I mean, that, that would be very helpful just to be able to go to like, I think it's nine point, if you go to the town clerk. Sorry about that, folks. I just, I just want to make sure I'm clear. I knew that it said you, you didn't have, it didn't say anything about mill rate when I read into it. I thought it said something about the change, which, okay, going to section of the charter, right, nine point might go down. Yeah. Objection, counsel, which that's a no annual budget referendum. It's said refer to me ten.
Yeah, C nine dash ten.
That's the one I
Yep.
It may be under referendums then if it wasn't there, um which is under in a referendum, which is that way. Sorry about this, right? Here you're gonna ask, I would have had it ready.
That's okay. I, I communicated to you, I apologize.
Yeah, you, you had asked if what could be done. I think I responded and we're trying to find out what the charter requires for the
Oh, so, yeah, no, so I think the question was, and I think we've heard from residents that the budget question can sometimes be confusing or it's complicated. And we, I think the question that was asked of me, at least by a few councilors, as well as people in the public is can we make it a more straightforward question? And that's what I talked to John about too, when we talked, you know, over the weekend. Uh and I gave him that, you know, the heads up that we wanted to have that kind of conversation just to see what what could be done or what is allowable. And also just to get a general feel
I, I guess this is gonna sound really aggressive and I don't mean it to be, but are we trying to not let the people know what we're doing? No, I'm sorry, so like, no. I'm sorry, I didn't finish my, I, I was getting there. Uh I think that the trifold that we, that is published by the town and is part of the
Charter.
Yes, and, and it's part of the resolution for this agenda item. It's um the number four on this resolution uh includes explanatory te- uh text that gets mailed to residents and included blah, blah, blah. Um that that informational packet should continue to have all the information it typically has, which includes the change in the expenditures. It includes the change in the estimated mill rate. Um it includes a lot of very good information. Furthermore, that um particular document is also typically enlarged and published at the polling location. Uh so it is available to all voters there as well as being mailed to every voting address. My question is, can we simplify the referendum question so that it is easier to understand? I actually don't mind putting a change in the referendum question. I just uh don't, didn't see that it was actually required that we do. Um and as I said in my research, I'm looking at a lot of different towns. Charter questions, I'm sorry, referendum questions, um that is not typically, or it's not included in most of the ones I found.
The change in the mill rate?
No, not, mill rate is not mentioned actually in most referendum questions. Questions, for example, from the town of Woodstock uh would be to approve the proposed budget of the town of Woodstock for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Uh this is obviously an old one, in the amount of X number of dollars, as has been recommended by the Board of Finance, and to appropriate said sum to meet recommended expenditures. That's the budget question for Woodstock, for example. Uh the one for Canton is, shall the Board of Finance recommended budget for fiscal year, whatever the fiscal year is, in the amount of X dollars be approved? Those questions are much easier to understand as opposed to the one uh that we saw, for example, in twenty nineteen in Tallinn, which said, shall the town of Tallinn's proposed twenty nineteen to twenty twenty budget of X number of dollars, reflecting a spending increase of X number of dollars or X percent, which requires a tax rate of X mills for an increase of X mills or X percent be adopted? That's a lot of numbers. And as a number person, it's too many for me even. Um there's a lot there. So as I think Steve mentioned, the idea of simplifying this question, um I think is something we should certainly consider.
I would not be in favor of doing anything that does not say the budget of sixty thousand, which reflects a spending increase or a decrease in the percentage. As far as the mill rate piece, I brought that up before because it's, we could change the because the setting of the mill rate happens after. If we find out we're getting more revenue,
Yeah.
like we have in the, what, what, when did we do that, John? It's within the last like five years. We had one where we got more revenue. This was, I think, our first
It was in twenty seventeen.
Was our first council. We got more revenue in and we actually changed the mill rate because you find out about that ahead of time. Because what you're asking the town to approve is the budget. But as long as it still says increase or decrease of the amount and the percentage of which is going up, I'd be fine with that. But and getting rid of the mill rate piece, but not just the flat budget numbers. Because then you're gonna, is that up, is that down? What am I voting, voting on? Is it an increase? Is it a decrease? That I think is, is taking away information from the town.
Yeah, I mean, it is posted in the trifold, but I do agree that, you know, it's it's certainly a part that people should be able to be aware of, or at least, you know, I think if it was removed, you know, obviously it's there, it's there on the trifold, but but I don't know if there's, if there's no objection to just removing the mill rate number despite all you're asking is, do you want to approve the budget and what is the change year to year? I would be okay with that. I don't know, Councilman Murray, is that, I know it's not hundred percent, but
Yeah, I mean, the the supporting documentation, which goes along with this referendum question, does detail the changes. You know, when uh when the charter was a budget question, the we did not see the old language and the new language on the ballot. We simply saw the new language. I, I think there's no reason why we couldn't just put the number. But I'm certainly not a hundred percent committed to that.
There any other commentary by councilors, one way or the other, about adjusting the language of the ballot question? Councilman Utichak? Sorry.
I mean, I honestly, it is a lot of numbers and the number person either, and it can be hard to explain to people even though we do it all day long, right? Missionary, like the mills, I mean, showing that we're actually decreasing. I think we'd want people to know what decreases the mill rate. I think that's a positive message. But that's just my, and I do think that number should be included. And I, I mean, if any, Lisa, I, if, if anybody ever has any questions at the polls, is there somebody that can help explain what it is? Is that something that's
We have to be very careful. You can't at the polls. But certainly there's, you're going to have your annual budget presentation, which is done by the chair. Coming up in April, there'd be plenty of questions for, that can be asked at that point. Usually the, if there is any explanatory text information that is at the poll, so the, the flyer, I think, is at the poll. So whatever information is in that flyer, that would be there. But that's, you know, you really can't, there's no way you can try to sway a person to vote a certain way or
Yeah, I understand that. Just interpreter for
So you have to be careful with what's there and not there.
Okay, well, that's just how, yeah. I mean, I think it's good move to feature and talk again, you know, not right that budget season, but that's just my
Are there any other comments from councilors, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, again, I think that uh we're all trying to work out the same, same thing. I think that simplifying this would be great, but I think it's also important that we give the overall, what the, what the overall budget is, what the increase or decrease percentage is. Well, I don't think it's saying an actual, like, you know, amount de- increase or decrease, but a percentage of three per two percent or something like that. Uh and a final, I, I guess that we wouldn't have to put a final mill rate in there again because it's, it's something that we set the mill rate after the budget is approved. So I think it's just a matter of saying a budget of X number of dollars, which reflects a spending increase or decrease, however it is, uh over last year's budget should be adopted and eliminate the section regarding the mill, uh the mill increase or decrease or what the final mills are. So I guess it would be on the draft resolution that we have here, striking everything uh from after, which requires a tax rate of whatever for a decrease be adopted. That whole language, so it's simply be, shall the town of Tallinn propose twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget of X reflecting a spending increase of X percentage um be adopted? And I think that that would meet everybody's requirements.
So I can just tell you from a historical perspective, um when we did this last time, we did get a lot of people who weren't happy that, and we were lowering the mill rate.
Yeah.
You know, we lowered it with more revenue, but we did have a lot of residents who wrote in to say that they did not like that because they felt, I tried to explain, so they didn't as well. They felt they were voting on the budget and the mill rate.
Yeah.
Right? But I think from a charter perspective, we're only voting on the budget expenditure, right? And I remember I talked to Steve about it because I was like, technically, we're not voting on the mill rate, but it's in there. We're only voting on the budget. And then the mill rate is corresponding from our revenue perspective. And if we learn anything post that vote, it only, it's only gonna change on a revenue perspective, which could, and a year like we saw a few years ago, mean the mill rate's gonna go up even higher if we lose revenue. And it could mean that it's gonna go lower if we gain revenue. So we did have quite a few people who pushed back and said that it was deceptive. There were people who were mad at us for lowering the mill rate. They were saying, thank you for lowering it, but I don't think you should do it because it sets precedence to play with the mill rate post, post um election. So you know, that's just historical feedback. John, you were part of that too, but um, you know, and I, like I said, I tried to say, if you read the charter, we're voting on the budget. We're not voting on the mill rate. We set the mill rate after the budget. But from what our public expected to see, they expected to see, what does this mean in my taxes? So I don't know how you want to handle that, you know, clearly you guys have talked about all that, so you have an idea of what you want to do. But I just think that from a historical perspective, that's something to consider.
I, I finally found what I was looking for.
Yeah, go for it.
It says, um, it says when the date of the thing is, uh the referendum, council may determine unless otherwise modified by the council as provided nine seven registered voters only shall vote to approve or reject the budget proposed by the town council with the result being determined by a simple majority. So it's the budget, like you're saying. Sir, but the, the, um, if you're doing any sort of uh explanatory text, I've read in another section where you do have to include the, the estimated, estimated impact on the mill rate in the explanatory text, which is that trifold document.
So it would be in the trifold, but not on the actual question?
It does, it does not mandate it to be on the actual question. And if you're gonna put it on the actual question, I would highly recommend the word estimated in there because the charter clearly states that you're setting the mill rate for certain amount of days afterwards.
I will say, we, you just had ideas and thoughts. I think we might bring it to the full council and have that discussion. I mean, at this point, I don't know if I want to disrupt the vote too much this year and maybe keep talking about it, you know, it just seems like there's a lot of questions. But if there were a majority of councilors that were okay with removing the bill rate portion of, of the question to simplify it. You know?
I mean, I think that asking people to vote on something that then might not
happen.
Happen is uh problematic. I mean, if we're, if the residents need to vote on the budget, then let's vote on the budget. That's
So I guess let me just do a, a straw poll, just to get a feeler for people if they would want to have the question, just cover the first part of the sentence, which is shall the town of Tallinn propose First part of the sentence, which is shall the town of Tallinn propose twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget. X dollars reflect the spending increase of X dollars or X percentage. And then just period right there, that's it.
Be adopted.
Be, be adopted, and then yes or no. So I'll just kind of go around the horn if there's, Councilor Utichan, are you okay with that?
Still thinking of.
Council.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm with that.
Counselor Nuccio?
I could be okay with that, just be ready to explain it.
Yeah, Vice Chair Regan, okay, yeah, Counselor Con?
Yeah.
So, so.
Decrease, I understand what Mr. Nuccio is saying too.
Yeah. So I think then at that point, once we get to actually calling on this resolution, we should make sure it's amended to include that language, you got that?
Striking from where it starts with which?
Yes.
After the bracket, six, five percent and leave be adopted, yeah.
Yeah. And then the only other item for here for resolution is the time and place for the referendum is blank and I wasn't sure, Lisa, if. I, I know, I think we've kind of had it in years past in different areas, we had it at the rec center one year and I think that was more because of COVID. Another year we had it in the library center room, okay, so it's ideally they want it in the, or well, not they.
The library program.
Registrars and clerks office, that's called connected, would like to have it in the library program room. Is there any objection to that, I know it's probably not. The program room, yeah, right, right next to the entrance to the library, okay. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the drafts, the draft resolution as outlined in Agenda Item Six as amended. I mean, so moved by Counselor Luba, seconded by Counselor Murray, we'll just do a voice call, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, all right, that is unanimous, so that brings us on to seven, which is a German, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-two P M. So moved by Counselor Luba, actually, I was switching, motion by Counselor Murray. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at seven thirty-two, thank you, everyone.